Morning.
Morning. Welcome to the V-York meeting for the 2025-2026 school year. We're gonna do something a little different today. We're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there anyone who would like to start it off?
Yeah. You have a flag? I'll start it. Whoever did. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the both, the stands, one nation, and the God, indivisible, good with justice for all.
Talk to someone. That's like, that's for government.
Tricia, can you tell us a little bit about that? Is that a new?
So historically, we've always done the Pledge of Allegiance. And when I started in 2018, we were doing it. I wanna say during COVID, it just happened to fall by, um, the cracks, crawl through the cracks. And now we want, wanna start something, I guess we begin the, um, doing that again.
Thank you.
Yes.
So where is the flag here?
And so we need to get a flag in this room.
And we also have to let people know that if they wish not to stand, they don't have to stand also. When we, if we're doing it at every meeting.
Yep.
Is it a legal thing, or is this like a decision for the board?
Did not anticipate this would garner as much conversation. Um, it is officially part of the policy. And so if you look at the order of the meeting, it's a policy. So the Policy Committee can review it and change it. But figuring if it's part of what the run of order of, for the policy and meetings are, then we should follow that.
Thanks.
I would like to begin with a motion to nominate a temporary chairperson until the president is elected. Do I have a motion?
Sure.
I move to approve the appointment of a, of a temporary, uh, board member to serve as chair until the president is elected.
Uh, who would you like to nominate as temporary chairperson?
I, I nominate Sean Bradwell.
Sure.
Oh, second. Sorry.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, we will continue with the agenda. Um, we need a motion, uh, to appoint Tricia Beresford as the clerk. And you can see the language, uh, an agenda item, uh, 1.4.
Okay, I move to appoint Tricia Beresford as the clerk of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York, for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
Uh, I heard Emily's voice, or maybe somebody else, but moved by Adam, seconded by Emily. Uh, discussion, debate, conversation, questions? All in favor? Fantastic. The motion passes unanimously. Uh, Tricia, we'd ask for you to take the oath.
Thank you, Sean. I, Tricia Beresford, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the clerk of the Board of Education of Ithaca City School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Tricia, for all that you're doing, for your service. We are greatly appreciative. We will continue on. Uh, next is, um, not a motion, but, uh, a, uh, sort of a resolution, but the swearing in of Dr. Brown as the superintendent.
I read, no, thank you.
Yes.
It's getting harder every year. Um, I, Dr. Lou Val Brown, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Superintendent of Schools according to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, for your service.
Thank you.
Um, Agenda Item 2.2 is the administration of the oath of elected school board members. And we have three folks who would take the oath. I believe they're listed here in alphabetical order. And we will begin with, uh, board member Aaron Crowell.
I, Aaron Crowell, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Board of Education Member according to the best of my ability.
Thank you for your service, Aaron. Jacob Schifrin.
I, Jacob Schifrin, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Board, the Office of Board of Education Member according to the best of my ability.
Thank you for your service, Jacob. Karen.
I, Karen Yearwood, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Board of Education Member according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. And for a forced moment in this meeting, we oftentimes applaud for new board members being elected, so. We thank everybody for your service and prior to leaving today, you get to sign a historic document. You will sign your oath into the, uh, book that Karen has here prior to leaving today.
Tricia.
Tricia. We're starting early. Fantastic. Thank you. Um, moving on, we will go to the nomination of the president of the board. Uh, I think it bears repeating that after last year's process, the board and the Policy Committee, uh, created a new process. Um, that process for both the, uh, board president and the board vice president begins with a nomination process. Uh, as many people, um, as would like, or for board members would like, including self-nominations, will be nominated. Uh, we would then hand out ballots for anyone who's been nominated and second. Uh, and we will continue that process until at least one person receives a majority vote of the, of the board. And so that is the process, and we'll do the same thing for the board vice president as well. Uh, if you're looking at board docs or you want the, uh, policy number, um, it is policy number 2210.1, um, which outlines and illustrates the process for the nomination, uh, and the selection of president and vice president. Any questions before we begin from board members? All right, we will open the floor for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Sean Eversley Bradwell to serve as president of this Board of Education.
Second.
I probably should say that I will accept the nomination since it's not a self-nomination. Uh, other nominations.
Sean, to be clear, this is just for president and vice president is separate, correct?
That is correct. Hearing no other nominations? We will ask Tricia to hand out ballots. Uh, the process is to write who you vote for, as well as then sign the ballot as well. We will then ask Tricia to collect all the ballots and then, uh, read the names as we did in prior years. Motion. You don't need to say who voted for who, just, and then, but they will be entered into the minutes of who voted for who.
Okay, we have one, um, yes for Sean. Another yes for Sean. Third for Sean, fourth for Sean, fifth for Sean. Six for Sean, seven for Sean. Eight for Sean. It's unanimous, nine votes for Sean.
Uh, that is very kind. Thank you, board colleagues. I appreciate your faith and look forward to the work ahead. I believe there is an oath of office later on, which we'll, we'll get to. Um, we'll proceed from there. Um, we will do the same process of nominations and then ballots for, uh, vice president, uh, including the discussion if need be. Um, and so we will entertain, uh, you wanna make sure I'm following my agenda correctly?
It's an oath now, but.
Yes.
Point three.
Yep. Yep. I, Sean Eversley Bradwell, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability. And now we will go on to Agenda Item 4.1, which is nominations for vice presidents, and we will entertain motions.
Uh, I motion to nominate Emily Workman for Vice President of the Board of Education for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
I motion to nominate Garrick Lealock. Oh, sorry, we needed a vote. I'm sorry. Right, one at a time to vote?
No, no, all nominations at once.
Okay, I motion to nominate Garrick Lealock for Vice President.
I second.
Additional nominations. Hearing none, we'll ask Tricia to pass out ballots. This would be the right time for that to happen. And actually, I didn't even ask if Garrick or Emily accept the nomination, so for that, I apologize. Emily, do you accept the nomination? Garrick, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Provide time or space for either one of you to say anything, should you like?
Um. I, yeah. I think that I'm like well positioned to take up role of vice president. Um, I think that the role of the president is an immense job. Um, I think that especially.
Can you please speak into the mic?
Especially stepping into the, um, supporting community relations, which I think I'm well positioned to do both from my professional experience and by doing, um, and supporting a lot of that work this year already. Um, I think could be, uh, really supportive and collaborative in nature. Um, I also, uh, have tried to do my due diligence to work, uh, with Dr. Brown throughout the year and to have conversations with him about every topic across the board, um, that we work on policy-wise. And so think that I can also contribute, um, to working collaboratively with both, uh, Dr. Bradwell and Dr., um, Brown to be thinking about agenda setting and about thinking about the big picture of the issues that are coming up in this district. Um, and then I also think that we, Doc, uh, Dr. Bradwell and I have worked really closely together on the Policy Committee this year. Um, and I think that we've proven to be able to work in a, a collaborative, mutually respectful, um, way, but also approach ideas from, from different places sometimes. Um, and I think that that's really important. And I think that being able to, especially right now, come on and to be able to, um, offer what I have been offering, especially recently about, um, thinking about board procedures and processes differently, and thinking about different ways of being able to, um, to do the work and set the agendas and, um, and engage in communication across all of the board members has been helpful. And I think that people have been receptive to that. And so I would love to be able to, um, bring the, the depth of knowledge and experience, um, with kind of some, some new thinking and some new strategies that we may be able to do the work more effectively.
Your attention.
Sure, I would just say for those who are new to the board, I would say the role of president and vice president is not a policy role, but a procedures role, meaning that, again, to be clear, president and vice president don't have any super votes or don't vote any different way than anybody else. The role of those officers is to ensure that we follow the right procedures and to ensure that all voices are heard before decisions are made. Uh, I would just point to my record on that. Um, I think I've been a diligent member and following procedure. But my particular personal reason for, uh, wanting to serve as vice president is that we are very fortunate on this board to have the leadership of Dr. Bradwell, who has an encyclopedia knowledge of school policy. Uh, I'm told he will not serve as president forever. There will be an, an end. I don't know when that will be. Uh, but before that day comes, uh, I would like to avail myself of his expertise and work with him and, uh, absorb the knowledge that he has accumulated over the years, um, and, and basically learn from him, so. That's it.
Which we've done in the past. Uh, board members, are there any questions for either nominee?
I just wanna thank you both for your willingness, and also thank you, Sean, like that's acknowledging it's a huge role. And, you know, stepping up is, is very much appreciated, and you're all very talented, hardworking people, and I appreciate you all.
Any additional comments? Questions? All right, then we will pass out ballots. And we will ask Tricia to walk around and collect them, so we're not hitting them in.
We have one vote for Garrick. One vote for Emily. Another for Garrick. Garrick. Emily. Garrick. Emily. Emily. Garrick.
Uh, if, that's it, that's everybody? If my math is correct, that is five votes for Garrick, which is a majority of the board. Uh, that means Garrick has, uh, become the vice president. And, uh, we will, uh, administer the oath of the vice president.
I, Garrick Lealock, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge duties of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Thank you, board members. Uh, we have, uh, president and vice president for next year. We will continue on with the agenda. Um, for new board members, the reorganization meeting is a required annual process, which some, um, items may not require much conversation. But I think, as I wrote to everybody, at any point in time, please do ask questions. Uh, some of the best onboarding is learning by doing. Um, and other items are sort of, for lack of a better word, pro forma, um, in terms of who is appointed and what positions and what way. Um, board colleagues, I feel as if we should probably go through each one individually, no matter how mundane it may be for the day. Um, but again, it would help everyone sort of understand sort of the structure and organization of the district, as well as some of the key roles that folks play. And so, uh, if we move to Agenda Item 5, um, we have three appointments that are located there. Um, and we will begin with, uh, 5.1, which is the appointment of treasurer, and we will entertain, uh, motions.
I move to appoint Lori Maj as treasurer of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York, for the 2025-2026 fiscal year.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. That's correct. Uh, questions, discussion, debate, conversation? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor? Uh, and we have something that we can either do the oath now or we can do it later. It has to be within 30 days. Uh.
Later.
Fantastic. We will do that later if that works for the board. Uh, Agenda Item 5.2, appointment of the tax collector.
I move to appoint Emily Shype, Assistant School Business Executive, as tax collector of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York, for the 2025-2026 fiscal year.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, debate, conversation? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor? Motion passes. I think that was unanimous?
Yes.
Fantastic. Emily, I'll assume that we'll also do it later. Fantastic. Uh, Agenda Item 5.3, appointment of the claims auditor.
I move to appoint Courtney, excuse me if I pronounce this wrong, Pacala? Is that correct? Pacala as claims auditor of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York, for the 2025-2026 fiscal year.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, conversation, debate? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor? Motion is unanimous, passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll also do that swearing in at a later date as well. Uh, we'll move to Agenda Item 6.0, or Agenda Item 6. Uh, there are a number of appointments that are here, and again, we'll go through, uh, each one, uh, if that works for the board, beginning with Agenda Item 6.1.
Okay, what, what is, we have to do these all individually, or what is the?
Uh, we can definitely do them all together. I, I think it is a cleaner process to do them all individually. There are no oaths that are here. Uh, we've gone and, and done it in different ways at various times. Sometimes it's been the entire, sometimes it's been one by one.
I guess to me it seems redundant, but I.
Well, for me, it seems like a good learning experience for us as board members to know the different positions that are in this district, in the business office and admin and so forth.
I move to approve Sharon Warren as deputy claims auditor of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York, for the 2025-2026 fiscal year.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, conversation, debate? Hearing none, all in favor? It is unanimous. 6.2.
I move to appoint Dominic Lisi, Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance, and/or Emily Shype, Assistant School Business Executive, as purchasing agents of the Ithaca City School District, District, Ithaca, New York, for the fiscal year 2025-2026.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Adam. Questions, conversation, debate? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion is unanimous. Uh, 6.3, Deputy Treasurer.
I move to appoint Emily Shype, Assistant School Business Executive, as Deputy Treasurer of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York, for the 2025-2026 fiscal year.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Question, conversation, debate? Hearing none, all in favor? That passes unanimously. Again, 6.4, appointment of the Deputy Tax Collector.
I move to appoint Lori Maj as Deputy Tax Collector of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York, for the 2025-2026 fiscal year.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Adam. Questions, conversations, debates? Hearing none, all in favor? Passes unanimously. Uh, 6.5, uh, appointment of the Records Access Officer.
I move to appoint Dr. Daniel Bryman, Administration Officer as Records Access Officer of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York, for the 2025-2026 fiscal year.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, conversation? All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. 6.6, uh, Records Management Officer.
I move to appoint Emily Shype, Assistant School Board Business Executive, as Records Management Officer of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York, for the 2025-2026 fiscal year.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, conversations? We'll call a question. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda Item 6.7?
I.
That's an idiot. My, my apologies.
No, no, it's okay. I'm just trying to. Uh, I move to appoint Heather Williams, Coordinator of the Facilities, as asbestos designee, E-H-E-R-A, of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York, for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Any questions, debate, conversation? We'll call the question. All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Uh, 6.8, Data Privacy Officer.
I move to appoint Zachary Lind, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Technology of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York, to the 2025-2026 school year.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, conversation? We'll call the question. All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Uh, 6.9, DASSA Coordinators.
I move to approve the following appointments of Dignity for All Students Act. DASSA Coordinators of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York, for the 2025-2026 school year. Um, Bell Sherman Elementary, uh, Principal Jeff Tomasic. BJM Elementary, Principal Samantha Little. Boynton Middle School, Principal Lauren Wright. Caroline Elementary School, Principal Jessa Salabrichi? Uh, Kiuga Heights Elementary School, Principal Eileen Granger. DeWitt Middle School, Principal Dan McGrath. Enfield Elementary School, TBD. Fall Creek Elementary School, TBD. Ithaca High School, Principal Karen Arnold. LA, uh, L- uh, Lehman Alternative Community School, Principal Keith Harrington. Northeast Elementary School, Principal Julie Humble. South Hill Elementary School, Principal Arthur Brown Jr.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, debate, discussion?
Is it a problem that we don't have anyone for Enfield and Fall Creek?
They will be on our next agenda, uh, to make sure that those are officially approved. Any additional questions? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor? Motion. Sorry, motion passes unanimously. Is that correct? Thank you very much. Uh, 6.10, Appointment of COVID Response Coordinator.
I move to appoint, uh, Carrie Burke, Director of Athletics and Wellness, as COVID-19 Response Coordinator of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York, for the 2025-2026 fiscal year.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob.
Sean, can I ask a quick question on this?
Of course.
Um, COVID-19 response, and I, I don't think we need to get in the weeds on this now, but given where we are at the pandemic, should this be more of, um, infectious disease response? Or, you know, should we have a more general term, given the nature of infections?
Emily?
Okay, I'm gonna repeat what you said, so it's in the microphone for anyone else listening. So, uh, Emily Shype discussed this with Carrie Burke, um, and it is actually mandated that we have a COVID-19 response. So this is a very specific response that is mandated and something we can explore probably throughout the school year. So thank you.
Yes, and I was gonna say that is my understanding as well, that it's a mandated requirement. Uh, we can make a note and come back to it, should that change, or just. provide additional information at our next board meeting as well. Any additional questions, comment? We'll call the question. All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, agenda item six point eleven, uh, Appointments of Treasurer of Activity Funds and Faculty Counselors.
I move to approve the following individuals for the positions indicated of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six fiscal year. Uh, Ithaca High School, uh, Treasurer of Activity Funds, Lucky Lucas, Faculty Counselor Karen Arnold, Karen Arnold, forgive me. Uh, L A C S, Treasurer of Activity Funds, Kristy Neely Lehman. Faculty Counselor Keith Harrington. Boynton Middle School, Treasurer of Activity Funds, Deborah Tudy. The, uh, Fac- Faculty Counselor Lauren Wright. DeWitt Middle School, Treasurer of Activity Funds, Alyssa McLaughlin. Faculty Counselor Daniel McGrath.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, conversation, discussion? If folks notice, these are only our secondary schools. Those are the schools that have activity funds, clubs, and organizations. For anyone who wants additional information, I would highly advise you come to one of the most exciting committees that we have on the board, which is the Audit Committee, which we discuss this in great detail. Hearing no, we'll call the question. All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Uh, agenda item six point twelve, Appointment of Deputy District Clerk.
I move to appoint Robert Van Kuren as Deputy District Clerk of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six fiscal year.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Question, conversation? Uh, we are in need of a Deputy District Clerk. Should Tricia not be available, someone would need to step into that role in official capacity. If that were to happen, it would also begin the meeting with a resolution to acknowledge this as well. Uh, but we're just having someone in, in line. Hearing no other conversation, we'll call the question. All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Uh, six point thirteen, Appointment of Workers' Compensation Cooperative Board.
I move to appoint Dominic Lisi, Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance to represent the Ithaca City School District on the Workers' Compensation Cooperative Board for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. And further, that Emily Shipe, Assistant School Business Executive shall be designated as the alternate representative.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, conversation, discussion? Hearing none. We'll call the question. All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Uh, agenda item six point fourteen, Appointment of Community Members to the Audit Committee.
I move to appoint the following community members as Audit Committee Members effective July first, twenty twenty five through July, through the July twenty twenty six Annual Reorganizational Meeting. Uh, Hey Hey Chan, Jed Ashton, and Christina Marie Renen Camp.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Uh, a quick point, not a, a quick piece of information. All three folks served on the Audit Committee uh, this year and have agreed to continue their service for this upcoming school year as well.
And I'd like to publicly thank all three community members for serving on the Audit Committee, and the Audit Committee is a committee that meets about three or four times a year. I remember, um, our, my board colleagues and I, we received an email asking if, um, the district books are audited. Yes, they are. New York State law requirement too. So thank you, community members, for serving.
Uh, and there are multiple audits. There's an internal audit and an external third-party audit as well. That happens annually. Any additional questions, conversation, discussion? Hearing none. We'll call the question. All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Uh, that would bring us on to agenda item seven point one pertaining to undertakings, and we will entertain motions.
I move to approve the bonding of all persons and positions required by law or regulation to be bonded through a blanket undertaking from a duly authorized corporate surety, but covering such positions as officers, clerks, or employees.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, discussion, debate? Hearing none. We'll call the question. All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Uh, this will bring us to agenda item, uh, eight. Um, some of these may require additional conversation and, and discussion. Please feel free to ask questions, obviously, at any point in time. Uh, but we'll begin with eight point one, uh, the designation of regular meetings and discussion sessions of the Board of Education, and we will entertain motions.
I move to approve the following designation of regular meetings and discussion section, sessions of the Board of Education. Uh, the Board of Education will meet twice monthly on Tuesdays, a discussion voting session for in-depth public discussion and a voting meeting.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, conversation, discussion? Hearing none. We'll call the question. All in favor? The motion, uh, all opposed? Any abstentions?
I would speak for.
All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Um, agenda item eight point two, the designation method for calling regular meetings and special voting meetings.
I move to approve the designation of the method for calling regular meetings and special voting meetings, be in accordance with I C S D Policy Number two, three, zero, zero, Calling Regular and Special Meetings.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, conversation, discussion? All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Uh, the designation as operative all existing bylaws and regulations will entertain motions.
I move to approve the designation that all existing bylaws and regulations of the City School District, Ithaca, New York operate uh, operative at the close of the school year, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Be and hereby are approved for the ensuring year or until action by the Board of Education changes or deletes such bylaws and regulations.
Second.
Questions, conversations, debate? For the most part, this is that we will continue on with our current policy book, um, until any said policy is changed or practice is changed. Uh, we'll call the question. All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Uh, agenda item eight point four.
I move to approve the designation of Board of Education Standing Committees for the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six as follows. Audit Committee, Curricular Innovations and Strategic Partnerships Committee, Facilities Committee, Finance Committee, Human Resource Committee, and Policy Committee.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, debate, conversation?
Why does curriculum, like, uh, I noticed that most of the committees, all the committees have sort of like a standard title except for number two. Um, why is it called Curriculum Innovations and Strategic Partnerships?
Uh, I can answer that question in a minute. I would like to make a friendly amendment that is simply renamed as Curriculum Committee.
Second.
Is that a friendly amendment, Aaron, since you moved it?
Absolutely.
Uh, there was a point in time when we were doing some different community partnerships, and so the name was expanded to capture more of the work. Uh, doesn't mean that we're not doing that work. Um, Adam was chair last year. I probably should ask Adam if he also feels it's an appropriate name change.
I do.
Um, so I, I, that's a great question, Jacob. I think it just should be Curriculum Committee.
Cool.
Uh, we are not required to have any of these committees other than the Audit Committee. That is the only required committee. And so I'd like for us just to take a second to make sure that these are the committees that the board has operated, that will operate with. We do tend to have a fairly cohesive structure of how and when committees meet, seems to have been working for the board, but it doesn't mean that's the way in which we have to operate. And so I just want to make sure we give some space in case there's something, a different idea, question, thought beyond the name change, which I'm in complete agreement with.
This isn't, uh, the time to get into it fully, but I just want to take the opportunity to note that while I do support, um, having all of these committees, I also um, want to work with the board to make them run much more effectively, to have, um, additional kind of sharing out and working collaboratively as an entire board, both on um, agenda setting and, um, collaborating on, on the issues, and then also reporting out. And otherwise, I think that they're far less effective than, than are worth having.
Um, so, uh, thank you, Emily, for that. Uh, board members may have seen that there is a committee charter template um, that has been in existence for about a year now. Um, it would be my recommendation that each committee spend some time to actually complete those charters to be much more specific about what the charge is, about the meeting, about agenda setting. Um, I think all that is included in the template. And I think it would be a good idea for us to have those completed, um, by committee members whenever those committees get assigned. So I'm, I'm in agreement. Um, the, my quick response would be, uh, again, I'm in agreement. Um, I also think that we have committees for a reason, and so I want to make sure that the division of labor is also present as well. Uh, that's the whole point of having the division of labor, but I agree that we can do a better job communicating, we can do a better job reporting out, et cetera. So um, I will share that. If folks have not received that template, let me know. I think I've shared it, but I'll make sure I share it again.
So I would ask a question just to put this on the record, because we have some, uh, new members?
Yep.
Committees can be attended by?
Uh, so the process for committee membership is we will send out a survey, uh, by we, I mean Tricia, will send out a survey asking board members of their committee preferences. Um, we are currently a nine-member board. Uh, it has worked out well. The board president is historically not a member of the committee. Of any of the committees, though, can be. There's nothing that prevents that from taking place. Um, the board officers will meet to, for lack of a better word, assign committee membership. Uh, and usually it's three members, uh, a quorum of two to be able to make sure a committee runs. No committee can act uh, or take any action. They make recommendations to the board. Those recommendations come to the board, and then the full board decides if it's gonna follow that recommendation or not. Um, and yes, uh, all board members are invited to attend all committee meetings at any point in time.
I am, I'm curious about how common, correct, uh, committees like this are for other school boards in New York State?
Yeah, great question, Jacob. There are seven hundred and seventy plus school districts in New York State. And my experience is that every school district does something completely different. Uh, sometimes there are no board members on the Finance Committee, as an example, in some school districts. Um, others, the board sort of leads the Finance Committee. Um, sometimes committees meet once every three months, sometimes they meet once a month. Uh, so I would dare say my experience, and I'll look to some of my colleagues and maybe even Dr. Brown, um, I don't think there is a consistent, common approach to board committees. Is that fair, Dr. Brown?
I would agree, and I would also add that I think we have more committees than I've seen. And our committees meet more often than I've seen as well.
So the, um, given my desire to spend time with my kids when not in board meetings, I don't.
Good luck.
I, I don't, I don't intend on attending every committee, so I guess I'm just curious, does the existence of committees prevent any school board member from being involved in the name, in, in the suggestion of motions or pri- like, if there's something in the H R committee, if there's an H R issue, but I'm not on the H R committee, can I nonetheless bring issues that can be discussed at the full board?
I think that's partly what Emily's asking for, to share agendas in advance, well beyond just committee members. Um, with rare exception, I don't think all board members attend all committees. Maybe some board members attend more than others without question. Uh, but the answer to that is, no, there's not an expectation that all board members would attend all committees. And for, that's for me, the very reason why I said that there's a division of labor for that very purpose.
Cool.
Dr. Blot?
Yeah, I would just add, uh, what I often do is watch the YouTube recordings, and then you can jump around and play it at a little bit of a faster speed, and that's a way to understand what's happening at the committees if you can't attend all of them.
And it also warrants, uh, a kudos to our communications team, which I think does an amazing job of providing summaries of every meeting and every committee meeting, which also then includes links to the exact minute of which that item is discussed. So a number of board members will read those summaries as well to be informed.
And you could also check in with, uh, committee chairs or committee members and ask, you know, what did you guys talk about?
Yeah, yeah, my, my question was just about making sure that decision-making is not, that like work could be delegated, but not decisions.
Again, no committee, and we, we should probably all, we're, there's something we'll be talking about. No committee can take action on behalf of the board.
Yes, so if you can send that template, Sean, that would be greatly appreciated. I'd like to, um, add on to what Emily said, and I think clarifies that even within the committees, there needs to be more structure, not just the reporting out and setting an agenda. So there has to be either this template or some sort of oversight within the community committees when we first meet, how we are going to operate.
Yes, in some committees, and I, I, I completely agree again with both Karen and with Emily. Um, I think, uh, the Finance Committee is a really good example. Um, that oftentimes will set a calendar for the entire year about which topics will be discussed. Um, I'm not sure that can happen with all committees because things come up, but at the same point in time, there could be much more collaboration between uh, committee chairs and committee members and board members.
I have a question.
Please.
Are we able to request to add a committee?
Yes. So, yes, any board member can request to add a committee. Um, I just will make one note that at the end of the agenda, there is a section for us to discuss, um, advisory councils and committees. And so we have, usually anything that is outside of this, we have, uh, thank you, Dan. Um, we have, uh, created an advisory committee and our advisory council for very particular issues. Um, right, so last year, if I'm not mistaken, we had a Revenue Exploration Advisory Council, and we had a Legislative Advisory Council. And years prior, we've had a Capital Project Advisory Council. We've had an Early Childhood Education Advisory Council. I'm sure I'm missing some, but there's just some examples of, not necessarily committees, but advisory councils, which would include the opportunity for folks outside of the board to also participate and, if not chair, those advisory councils. Does that answer your question, Madam?
And, and one thing to note, if we're adding any committees, we, the board members, are responsible to participate on committees, so with nine of us and six committees, and just making sure that we have the bandwidth to do that.
But if you'd like to make a recommendation, we would also love to hear it. You can have that conversation, so feel free to share. So choose, if you'd like, yeah, I think, if you think that it would be, if you'd like for us to consider it as.
Well, for me, it would be, um, just requesting to be considered, uh, like an athletic committee. And or a, um, also a special ed committee. So we can like focus more on certain, just topics and.
Thoughts, comments, reactions?
Well, further on in our agenda, we have discussion on advisory councils and committees. At that time, I would say that we should go into discussion. At this time, I'd like us to just focus on whether or not we're approving these six committees at this point.
And just for, for the Madeline and Jacob, for being new, so these committees are like the official standing committees that are typically very common. So a special education committee, for instance, is something that we discussed over the years, having sort of an advisory, um, oh my gosh.
Council committee.
Thank you, council. Um, and there's more flexibility often with those. And so I think with what Karen is saying, like voting on this to make these committees official, we can do now. We can move forward and discuss other ones. Uh, but that does not mean that if we ever wanted to go back and have a conversation, that we couldn't form an official committee at another voting meeting. So don't think like what we vote on now is set in stone. This is all fluid.
That's correct.
Thank you. That was kind of my question. Thanks.
And I know there's been a conversation about some sort of council on mental well-being for students. Um, later on, I'll be, uh, advocating that we have a, a special advisory council on sustainability um, to review the Sustainability Action Plan, um, things like that. So we have different ways of doing it, and we can also discuss different models as well. So I'm not sure. I believe SEPTA is still active. Am I?
SEPTA's had a bit of a resurgence, so it's, it's kind of under new leadership. Yeah.
And SEPTA is the Special Education Parent Teacher Association, the P T A, so there may be a way in which we may not have an advisory committee, but we work with SEPTA as board members to help support and/or be informed. So there's different ways in which the board can do its work. Um, but those are all great questions to ask, and let's put them on the table, and let's see where board members are.
For folks who've been around to do, are any of these committees, do anyone recommend that any of these committees be insolidated or removed? I just know generally, the more committees, the worse. And so maybe this is the right number, but.
The only time, in my time on the board, uh, and folks could have other ideas, the only committees that have been combined at one point in time. Uh, and folks could have other ideas, the only committees that have been combined at one point in time was finance and facilities. Uh, we have purposely separated those, given that we are in the middle of a capital project and potentially. Exploring an additional capital project. And so. While they are connected, because the facilities include the finances. Um, they are also separate, and so we felt the need to give attention to each one. Um, beyond that, uh, my experience is that each of these committees has more than enough work to do to fill its time.
And finance and facilities meetings occur, you know, back to back, just so that information can be. Kind of together. So it, it kind of is, it's not formally combined, but it is definitely united in its work.
I think actually two meetings last year were combined.
Yeah.
Yeah. Additional questions, conversation, suggestions, debate? So if I understand correctly, the motion was to approve the six committees that are here with the. Modification, the amendment that we renamed the curriculum committee to just the curriculum committee. Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Any additional? Discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question, all in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, agenda item eight point five, the designation of the delegate to the T S T BOSI's executive committee. And.
Can I actually suggest that we, can we discuss this before we move?
I believe that would be a good idea, so we can suspend Robert's rules for a quick second and have a conversation about this.
Um, I will gladly open that conversation to give background because this, um. For folks who are new, but also just for us in general as a board. I feel like this role has always been a little bit confusing and it took me. Being the, one of the delegates to really fully understand this role, and I think it's way more important. Um, than we recognize as a board, and I'd like to point that out. So, um, and I, I am like. I'm sorry, my neurodiversity is failing the word that I'm trying to find as we look to, it's not globalization. What is the word? Regionalization. This is more and more important. And Karen, I don't know about you, but so I, I want to say that. So the T S T School Board Association is a meeting of local area school boards. So you are able to meet with school board members from Newfield, uh, Dryden, Truitt, Mansburg.
All the component districts of T S T BOSI's.
Thank you. Um, and you're really discussing issues that we're facing at each school. This meeting happens on the BOSI's campus. It is really enlightening. It's a great way to understand what other districts are facing. It's a great way to learn what's coming from BOSI's. It's a great way to better understand those regionalization efforts. And I think it really behooves us as a board to take this role more seriously. Um, I, I mean, in addition to having board representatives. I hope that we can include a formal report in every voting meeting, so we can have a better understanding of what's happening. So whatever representative goes to these meetings, we can kind of explain what's discussed. Um, especially when it comes to, you know, when we're having budget discussions as a, as a school board here and talking about. How difficult things are here, it really helps to have a. Temperature on what is facing the region. And I think sometimes we get caught up in our own district and we don't recognize that. Things are actually not so bad here, or this is working better there. And really being able to bring this information back to the board, I think can really help us in our work here. Um, and so when we nominate a board rep and an alternate board rep to this board. It is a once a month, I think it's the first Friday of every month where you attend a luncheon meeting with other members. Uh, BOSI superintendent currently Lily Talke, not that there's any. I did like she's leaving, but, um, you know, we all know her well. Uh, she is always there and they are always bringing in sort of, um. Uh, the Central New York School Board Association leadership and other leadership from across the state. This is a really powerful meeting that I think we need to kind of pay more attention to. And so with that, Karen, I'm gonna let you also speak.
Right, I, thank you. I, I agree it's an important meeting. I disagree with your comment that we haven't taken it seriously or paid attention to.
I mean.
Or something of that.
As a full board.
As a full board, um, that it goes back to what Emily was saying about committee meetings and report out and structure. We have to do more of that and where this should be an item on, um. On our regular monthly board meetings to give a report out, if so be. Um, with regard to regionalization, our superintendent also attends a meeting with, um. T S T BOSI superintendent and other superintendents within, um, the school, the T S T BOSI's. Region and all, so which, um, they talk about things, what's happening and so forth. So they, they will be in full discussion and continued discussion on regionalization as well as other topics. Um, I do agree that consistency is needed in attending this meeting. If you're, if discussion, I don't agree that we should have three representatives from ICSD. To attend this meeting, but two, because it's been good, like, um, Erin and I have been playing. Um, team tag and attending and keeping each other abreast. At this past year, we were able to give a report on, out on school liaisons. The student liaisons, which, um, is now mandated that every school district has that within New York state. So we have been having that in place since 2013. So I think it's, it's a great opportunity to hear from other school districts as well as report out as to what is happening within our school district.
And last year, if I'm not mistaken, well, you just said it right, uh, Karen and Erin served, um, in this role last year. Uh, Karen, were you in the role previously as well?
Um, no, that was our first year doing, asking for two individuals. And it was that same T S T BOSI's, um, School Board Association. That elected, um, Eldred Harris, who served in that capacity for years, a prior board member to ICSD. Had elected him and as an award winner for Central New York School Board Association, which occurred the end of April. Um, that Eldred always brought forth, um, um, enlightenment and information to the discussion table. So Erin and I did it for the first time this past year, twenty twenty four, twenty five.
And would either one of you be willing to serve again?
I, I would be willing to serve again.
I would also, I would, I want to, I don't want to bogart it, so if others are interested.
I'm very interested.
Karen, do you want to arm wrestle over it?
I don't want to arm wrestle. I said I'm interested in serving and I know that when I left, um, the meeting this, at the end of this school year. They said, hope you will return it. We said, we'll wait and see, so.
No, I, listen, I, um, I, I will gladly, I, I want, I want to like get updates from y'all, like, so it doesn't have to like. I, I'm very interested in this, but I agree, I think three is too many. And honestly, I've got plenty of other stuff going on on Fridays, so, um. I, I will relinquish my, my role there.
And board members may remember, we just received a letter within the past two weeks from the T S T BOSI's reminding us of the importance of. Uh, making sure that we had someone representing the Ithaca City School District for this position as well.
Um, before we do a motion, I, can I just, I, the, the language on this motion. Making one a board rep and one an alternate board rep feels. Like one is lesser? Is there a way that, would we be comfortable rewording this motion to just say? Motion to designate two board reps to, to choose to alternate as needed?
Or just two board reps and let folks work it out?
Yes, I.
I'd be in support of that among other board members.
Yeah, because that's what we did this year. We would contact each other if we couldn't make it at any given time to give updates and so forth, so.
And my only other quick caveat would be, um, not that there'd be a report out at every meeting. But similar to the way in which we do committee updates, that this would then be listed as a committee update in that timeframe as well.
I, I may be confused, but I think the online or docs. Resolution is as worded as you suggested and the paper one is worded as alternatives.
It's, it's a both and, the recommended action includes alternate, but the public content says it much more the way in which.
Oh, it's actually right under there, be it resolved.
Yep.
So I'll gladly read this if we're ready.
Um, what would be for any other discussion? I mean, we can also move it and still continue to debate it and discuss it as well.
Okay, I move to designate Karen Earwood and Emily Workman as members. Of its Board of Education to be the delegates to the T S T BOSI's Executive Committee for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six fiscal year.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Additional questions, conversation? Hearing none, we'll call the question, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you both for your willingness to serve and we look forward to hearing, uh, the updates. Uh, agenda item eight point six, the designation of impartial hearing. Should I say impartial hearing officer or partial hearing? Uh, appointment? Uh, this, I'm not even sure how many we had, can. Would it be Dr. Bryman? How many impartial hearings did we have last year that board members had to? Four?
Impartial hearing, Mary. Impartial hearing, how many we had?
Yeah, it wasn't many. Gotcha. My apologies.
How many did we have last year? Impartial hearing.
Impartial.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And what is this exactly?
Now, you want to talk about what an impartial hearing is? Come on up, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So an impartial hearing is the right for families through the special education process to disagree. And, and have the process audited with a mediator in support of the state. So our representative is Heather Sweet. That's one person we've worked with. We had about a, you know, I don't have the exact number. I think it's roughly a half dozen. Um, this past school year.
And Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I was, I think I served as this one year and. Oftentimes it is something that a new board member takes on because it is such a rare. Occasion that you have to attend this and not to say that we don't take it seriously, it's just a nice way to sort of slowly, uh, you know. Get to know the system.
I have experience doing this sort of thing, um, and I'd be happy to do if, if needed. I've, I've served before.
Would anybody else like to put their name forward?
I move to designate Jacob Schifrin as the member of its Board of Education. Responsible for appointing an impartial hearing officer in accordance with the rotational selection process. Established by the Commissioner of Education, section two hundred point two E of the Regulations of the Commissioner of Education. To conduct hearings in the district pursuant to section four, four, zero, four, parentheses, one of the education law.
Sure.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Adam. Discussion, debate, conversation? Hearing none, we'll call in question, all in favor? The motion passes. Uh, all, Erin, are you in favor?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yep.
Yes, I am.
Let me try it more, my apologies, all in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Uh, agenda item eight point seven, the designating, um, official depositories.
I move to approve the designation of the following banks and or trust companies as the official depositories for the funds of the Ithaca City School District. Ithaca, New York during the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Tompkins Community Bank, J P Morgan Chase, M and T Bank. Uh, Shimon Canal Trust and N Class, New York Cooperative Liquid Assets Securities System and Five Star.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by, uh, Jacob. Question, conversation, debate, discussion? Yes, Erin, uh, Karen?
Um, we had a slight snafu with one of our banks about two months ago. Are, have we resolved that? Is the bank, you don't have to state, is the bank listed on here? Are we looking into doing anything?
Thank you for the question. Yes, the bank, uh, uh, is listed here as, as others are. And, and we're looking to do an RFP to, uh, look at our banking services in general. And hopefully that RFP will be, uh, sent out in the next week or so.
So would the intention of the RFP be to find new banks essentially? I like, is the intention to stop using the one bank that we had the major issues with?
I don't think I can say that, but I think we're gonna look at our services in general and we're gonna be very specific about our needs. And with hopes that someone can meet those.
Additional questions, comments, debate? Hearing none, we'll call the question, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Oh, my apologies, my apologies. Uh, all opposed? Any abstentions? You're sitting too close to me, Todd. Uh, eight point eight, the designation of the official newspaper. We will entertain.
I, uh, I'll, I'll move and then we can discuss. Uh, move to approve the designation of the Ithaca Journal as the official newspaper for the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York. During the school year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, for the publication of all legal notices. And such other data as is required to be published by law and for which the same may be qualified to act.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, debate, conversation? Yes, Karen?
My question continues about using Ithaca Journal, given that it's not a, um. How do I say this nicely? It's not a, um, regular paper that's accessible to the community. And it's not even in the community, although it's, um, considered Ithaca Journal. And it doesn't say here that we have to use a written periodical. It says published. We do have some other. Online newsletters or news reports, they call themselves, there's several of them. That, um, why are we? Providing information only to the journal and by the time our community receives the information, it's outdated.
Yeah, I agree. What are the minimum, like, what are, yeah, to Karen's point, what are the requirements? Does it have to be a newspaper or?
We believe that at some point in time, the state may change this. Um, it's a question that we've been asking for years. My current understanding, and I'm happy to follow up, and again, this is something that can be changed at any point in time. My understanding is that it has to be a daily paper that is available in print.
They claim they are daily, but they are not available in print on a daily basis. And especially when it's being distributed to, um, businesses or homes, it is not distributed on a daily basis.
I, I'd like to point out, um, a couple of things, given that this is my background. Um. I think, uh, and then also something that I care deeply about. One, I, uh, when we get to talking about advisory councils and whatnot. I wonder if this is something we take up on legislative advocacy, if that does exist again. Um, due to the systemic dismantling of free press in this country, there is, there are no, like, really. Local communities, small communities just don't have this. This is an outdated mandate that we're facing. And it's problematic. Um, and so that makes us have a motion within our policies and designations that is not equitable. And not really truly something that is useful for our community. So I feel like right now, this is just a mandated. Requirement that we have to approve, but as a board, when we really want to communicate to the, to the community. This is something that I think we should focus on and examine and work to change. On a state level, whether that be NISBA, whether that be local legislators. This is something I think that we need to start taking on because they're just, what this mandate asks for does not exist anymore. And that's not doing due diligence to our communities, any, any school districts, communities. It's not fair. It's not equitable. It's not sustainable.
It also indicates that oftentimes our laws are two to three years behind the reality of lived experiences.
Yeah.
Um, I'd also be careful and I'll take the risk and say it, some of, uh, the ways in which things get reported locally, I would not consider to be journalism, but more tabloid. Um, and so trying to find something that is actually journalistic also makes it something that's difficult as well. Uh, but the last time I asked this question, which was about six months ago. Uh, with a legal team, it's the same response that I got that the, the mandate, the statute has not changed. Um, this is something I believe. I don't know if we have any public notices between now and August ninth. Um, I think I'd be in, I think I'd be in favor of adopting it. With a note and expectation that we will research, find out what our options are and move forward. But I think I'd be a little uncomfortable not having a newspaper of record in case we needed one between. in case we needed one between now and, and August, if that makes sense. Normally I'd say we should table it, but, but that doesn't feel right either, given that it's possible that something may come up that we'd have to.
Can I add something?
Of course.
I just want to say that when I'm doing the school elections, we've always used the Ithaca Journal as well as the TruMansburg Free Press. So, those, those are the two newspapers that we use for notices, legal notices.
I mean, and Sean, I like your idea and thank you, Tricia, for that information. I think, and I don't know if this is something we'd want to open up and do a on-the-fly thing, but as a, as a board member, I would propose that we really explore not choosing one, but really just, um, excuse me, sending notices to all local publications instead of one.
And that we can do whether we have a policy or a process or not, right? We're just adopting the official paper, but we could send it to other media outlets, other forms of media that we can ask Tricia to do now without, without sort of waiting to see what the response is.
Yeah, and even, I would love to, you know, ask our communications team to identify basically every local source that our community accesses and that we can blast through those channels, whatever information needs to go out.
We will stay off next door, but I understand.
Yes.
Additional questions, comments? So, we'll make, I'm making a note. This is something we'll come back to. We'll do some additional research and bring it back to the board. That works. Hearing no other comments at this point in time. We'll call the question all in favor. All opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. You received, you got the votes. Fantastic. Eight point nine, designation of signers.
I move to approve the designation of Lori Mudge, Treasurer, and Emily Shipe, Assistant School Business Executive as the authorized signer for the disbursement of all funds of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York during the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six fiscal year.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, conversation. All in favor? That is unanimous. Eight point eleven, receivers of money. And here we can just say as listed if that works for you.
We got it. What about eight point ten?
What about eight point ten? Eight point ten?
Okay, so I move to approve the designation of Questar Three Bosse's as internal auditors for the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six fiscal year.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, conversation. Hearing none, all in favor. The motion passes unanimously. Now to eight point eleven.
I move to approve the designation of the following positions as receivers of money for the twenty twenty, for the school year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Treasurer, Ithaca City School District, School Treasurer, Ithaca High School, School Treasurer, Lehman Alternative Community School, School Treasurer, DeWitt Middle School, School Treasurer, Boynton Middle School, Librarians and Library Cooks, School Secret, Clerks, School Secretaries, all schools, Cafeteria Cashiers, Tax Collector, Tax Clerks, Gate Person, Purchasing Agent, Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance, School Lunch Clerk, Transportation Director, Director of Athletics and Wellness, Athletic Facilities Manager, Athletic Equipment Manager, Director of Child Nutrition.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, debate, conversation. Hearing none, we'll call the question all in favor. That is everyone with someone out of the room. Eight point twelve, designation of independent auditor.
I move to approve the designation of N Cero and O C CPAs as independent auditors for the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York for the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, debate, conversation. Hearing none.
Discussion. It says OC. That's not.
It's CEO. It's a typo. So, it's, um, yeah, uh, just a friendly edit for what I said. It's, it's and company. That was a typo that I read wrong.
Additional comments, questions? We'll fix the typo in the recommended motion, though it is in the public content. Call the question all in favor. The motion passes with the noted absence. Eight point one three, designated custodians of money.
I move to approve the designation of the following positions as designated custodians of money for the school year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Treasurer, Ithaca City School District, Schools Treasurers for the following, Ithaca High School, LACS, DeWitt Middle School, Boynton Middle School, School Secretaries, all schools, Cafeteria Cashiers, Tax Collector, Tax Collector, Tax Clerks, Purchasing Agent, Director of Child Nutrition, Transportation Director, Director of Athletics and Wellness.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Question, conversation, debate. All in favor? Everyone in the room with a noted exception. Uh, this brings us to agenda item nine. Uh, we are making good progress. Stay with us, folks. We're, we're closing in here. This is the authorization for use of telephone, wire, and electronic banking services.
I move to authorize Lori Mudge, Treasurer, Emily Shipe, Assistant School Business Executive, and Dominic Leese, Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance individually to utilize telephone, wire, and electronic banking services at the Ithaca City School District designated official depositories during the school year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, debate, conversation. Call the question all in favor. Everyone here with a noted exception. Nine point two.
I move to authorize Tricia Beresford, Clerk of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York, and Dominic Leese, Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance, to sign agreements, reports, and claims to the State Education Department in connection with the operation of the National School Lunch Program in the schools of the city school district, Ithaca, New York for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Question, conversation, debate. Hearing none, all in favor. That is everyone with a noted exception. Agenda item nine point three.
I move to approve, I move to authorize Dominic Leese, Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance, and Emily Shipe, Assistant School Business Executive to sign agreements, contracts, and any obligations with vendors, consultants, contractors, or other service providers for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Question, conversation. Hearing none, all in favor. Everyone with a noted exception. Nine point four.
I move to authorize Robert Van Kuren, Director of Human Services and Labor Relations, Zach Lind, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and Technology, and/or Dominic Leese, Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance to certify all payrolls prepared on behalf of the city school district, Ithaca, New York for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six fiscal year.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Debate, questions, conversation. All in favor. The motion passes unanimously. Nine point five.
I move to approve authorization for the cooperative bidding as authorized by General Municipal Law, section one, one, nine, dash, zero, for the purpose of selected items for use in and by this district.
Questions, conversation. Oh, sorry. We need a second. Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, conversation, debate. Hearing none, all in favor. The motion passes unanimously. Nine point six.
I move to delegate the authority to invest school district monies to Dominic Leese, the Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance, and/or Lori Mudge, the Treasurer, and/or Emily Shipe, Assistant Business School Executive in accordance with sections sixteen, zero, four, dash, A, and seventeen, twenty-three, dash, A of the education law and any other pertinent regulations.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, conversation, debate. All in favor. The motion passes unanimously. Nine point seven.
I move to authorize the establishment of petty cash funds for the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six in the amounts listed and appoint the designated positions as custodian, custodians to the funds. ICSD Treasurer, one hundred dollars, and ICSD Transportation Director, one hundred dollars.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Questions, conversation, debate. Hearing none, we'll call the question all in favor. The motion passes unanimously. Nine point eight.
I move to approve recognition of select district employees who are required to carry district-owned cellphones in order to meet their job responsibilities.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jacob. Question, conversation, debate.
This is nine point eight. What, why do, who do we provide cellphones to? Why and how much does it cost? Like, I've worked in districts that do that and they stopped doing that like a decade ago.
Great question. Zach, come on in. We would love to get out of the cellphone business too, but we have, I'm thinking this year.
Uh, yeah, so this has been a conversation point over the last couple of years. Uh, oh, Zach Lind, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and Technology. Uh, all right, so we actually, in Board Docs, we submit a list of all the titles that we designate. So, you should have that per view.
It's not listed in Board Docs at this time. And that's it's in the executive.
Yeah. Um, but to answer your question, usually we're providing cellphones to, uh, folks in, usually in leadership roles or really active service roles where they're, they're needed to be on-call as part of their job, but they're not always in a specific location with a cellular cellphone. So, a good example would be, you know, Director of Facilities who's going in and out of buildings, might need to call a contractor, might need to call back to the office, ask questions. Same thing for a lot of our administrative, uh, staff who are, you know, building principals, associate principals who are in and around the building, but not necessarily always in a specific location.
And how much is spent on?
So, a cellphone, uh, per, it's, it's about sixty dollars a month, depending on how the, the plan is structured. The Verizon is our, the service that we've been using and usually that provider provides, you get like a zero-cost phone and then you just have a monthly fee.
So, I'm just asking for more directly. So, like, how much?
Oh, the, the total, like, the total cost.
We paid for.
I don't have that right here. I want to say for the, just guessing off the top of my head, I think it's something like eighty thousand dollars in a year. But, but then, but, but.
Really? That's, uh, uh, okay. Sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'll just say I I think that, I can think of a lot, lot, lot better ways to spend eighty thousand dollars a year that would directly impact kids. And I guess I'm shocked. I don't know. I'm shocked. And maybe I just don't have the context, but I'm shocked that we do this.
Jacob, for the list, if you go into the executive session, section, there is a list that identifies all the positions as well. So, I'm just letting you know that you can see the list that's there. So, it doesn't, we'll get to the, the amount in a minute, but I'm just giving you an example of where the titles are.
Jake, and I'll add, um, as a former CIO, I've been dealing with our cellphones for about twenty years now and would love to get out of the business of providing cellphones to employees. And I know the requirements and that number is much cheaper than it used to be and their E-rate, federal E-rate reimbursements that our district receives based on how much we expend with telecommunications. So, that's why it's hard to give you a hard number, but there, there is a number, there is a cost. And if moving away from providing cellphones, we would need to talk about policies and ways to provide access to principals twenty-four, seven and others, and that would be contractual obligations. And so it gets rather complicated and challenging very quickly.
I think I'll just jump in because I agree with you, Jacob, and we talked about this in, in other years past and we had conversations like this and kind of said, well, you know, we can look into it. We could look for some other options. We'll see about it, I feel like, and then it keeps coming back up on the agenda and we really haven't had conversations about it. And it is very expensive and it does seem like, uh, there are a lot of other options because everybody has a cellphone that they're carrying around twenty-four hours a day and we could purchase second lines. We've talked about all these different options before. So, I, I agree with your sentiment.
One, one thing to note is after discussions over the last two years, we actually have, we did audit a lot of these and we did cut back significantly on the number of phones that were distributed throughout the district. So, um, that was, so just to your point, there, there has been action around that in response to questions, but we're, we're really, and then I will also note, um, it has been a discussion item with the different bargaining units about which, uh, you know, use of, use of cellphones. We haven't come to any conclusions, but it's certainly something that we could discuss in the future.
Karen? And we have to take into consideration that our, um, the district's employees may not want to use their personal cellphones for, um, business purposes, whether or not there's a second, an option for a second line and so forth. Because if anything should happen to the cellphone needed, they're giving up their whole cellphone, their personal cellphone. So, we have to take into consideration that.
We've also, uh, started using talking points for a lot of our schools, sort of our teachers and many of our administrators, which is a software tool that sends text messages via a computer directly to, using the list from school to directly to caregivers and actually, in fact, translates into target languages and is, is, you know, works really well. So, we've, we've been transitioning many of our employees to that appropriate.
That's on their, um, computers.
That's on their computers and it doesn't necessitate a phone. Yeah.
I yeah, I mean, I think like I've, I've experienced like concerns before about using personal phones or like sharing out numbers. I think like that's why we have Google Numbers lately. It's like anyone at this point can hide their number if they don't want it shared. I guess I'll just say like eighty thousand dollars. I have talked to parents and principals and teachers. I could list out right now five hundred things that would be like, like, act like things that would directly support students. I think it's I think it's really a huge I think we should not, I think we should not do this.
I, I, I agree about the, the cost, right? It's something that we're all trying to do, right? It's to minimize expenditures and increase revenue whenever possible. Some of the school districts that I've worked with have gotten out of the cellphone game, but they have then created monthly installments into people's contracts to pay for the use of their personal cellphone. So, even while the district is no longer providing the device, the reduction in cost isn't an eighty thousand dollar reduction. It may be a twenty thousand dollar reduction because you're still providing a monthly stipend for someone to use their personal device to be available twenty-four hours a day, which some of our principals need to do. So, I think it's, to Adam's point, something that keeps coming up. It's been coming up. It will continue to come up. Um, I don't know if there's a way in which we could set a, a different timeline or conversation about it, but I don't want us to think just because we take away cellphones that there will not be an additional cost. And it would probably be a negotiated item as well. So, part of it would be, uh, working with our unions if that's something that they would be willing to negotiate around. So, it's not as simple as the board saying we're not paying for cellphones anymore.
So, we can't, so we are contractually obligated to.
I'm, I, I'm not making that statement. I'm saying it's a conversation that is a little bit more complex than simply saying we're not providing cellphones. And we've heard from a number of administrators who have significant concerns about using their personal cellphone twenty-four hours a day for work without having a separation between work and, and I again, and I know other districts that have done that, but then have provided stipends to folks to help cover that cost.
Just a bit more, eighty percent of our cellphone costs are covered by federal E-rate reimbursement. So, eighty percent of that cost is covered or is a rebate or a refund, although some of that can be in question going forward. But, uh, and then also some of the other concerns we hear from folks is a personal phone could be foible or subject to foil if using that. So, folks, yeah, struggle with using a personal phone for any type of business-related item because of that issue.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, which is that uh, I just think any change to the policy should be run through BSK because of subpoena power.
Should be what?
Run through BSK. Von Shinneken King, B S and K for short, the acronym is the legal.
Counsel.
It's our legal counsel for the school district. The, the particular concern is whether, uh, there would be a situation which an employee's personal phone could be subpoenaed. Because if school district business occurred on their personal phone, there's legal action taken, the phone is subpoenaed, then you're subpoenaing personal property. I'm not saying this would happen. I'm just saying that we should seek the advice of BSK to be sure that's not a concern.
Thank you.
And I, I'd like to finally add, you know, in making this decision, yes, it's a lot of money, but I, I'd like to hear from the employees that are advocating to have dual phones. I mean, I imagine if this is something they're wanting and they're trying to get in their contract, I would like to hear their reasoning before I make a unilateral decision. Um, because that is like their, our phones are attached to us all the time. So, wanting to separate yourself a little bit once in a while, um, is really important. And when we talk about mental health. um, is really important. And when we talk about mental health, you know, being able to turn off your work phone on a vacation or whatever is critical. So I, I'd, I'd want to hear their reasoning before I'd make any decision.
For me, lastly, the irony is that a good number of people who are on the list are on the list because they are responsible for student well-being. And so their phones are connected to the job in, in, in that way. If you look under the executive session.
I don't, I, I'm not able to, can someone teach me or is?
Without question. Are you, are you on Board Docs right now?
Yes.
Are you signed into Board Docs with your official information?
I don't know how to.
Upper right-hand side? There's a little person. And so if, then if you go to Agenda Item ten point one, it says enter into Executive Session.
It's not opening for me, it opened.
Uh, this is something that we can, uh, I don't, we'd have to have a conversation, I don't know if we can table it. We can hold the conversation until after the executive session to, uh, we can move it to Agenda Item. I'm looking here. Ten point four for approval, so folks can get a chance to take a look at the list.
I think it, I would think it would be nice to at least do that because, um, I looked at it earlier and I recall, first of all, the, the title, the role titles are like not super clear. Um, and there was like one title that had like fourteen phones allotted to, I'm, I'm sure there's like fourteen different staff, I don't mean. Um, but just to kind of, we're talking a lot about like admin and, and folks who are, who are really, um, directly focused more on student stuff. But I think it would be helpful to understand like who all of the employees are, because I think there's like over thirty maybe. Um, and also the form is incomplete, so there are descriptions, um, for some, um, of them about why they need a phone and other ones are left blank. Uh, so it would be helpful to have complete information as well.
And just one, one point, uh, I agree with Aaron that it can be helpful to separate out. But I just want to name, the district not paying for it doesn't prevent people from doing that, it's just saying that the district would prioritize using those funds elsewhere. And that's, that's what I'm advocating for, like, yeah, that's what I'm advocating. But yeah, let's, let's do what's next.
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
Motion to, can I motion to table that motion until after Executive Session?
Where? Um, we can, it's funny, I think we already have in here, right, that I am, as many folks know, I am not a fan of Robert's rules. Uh, I find it to be oppressive and problematic at best, though I understand the need for some form of, uh, procedure to make sure that meetings run smoothly. If there are no objections to the board or from the board members, then I recommend we move this current agenda item, even though it's been moved to Agenda Item fifteen point four to revisit as the last piece of the voting meeting, uh, if that is okay by folks. If there are objections, then by all means, please.
I can amend my motion, I, I'll move to table this.
Well, table would mean that we take it up.
Sorry, sorry, I motioned to move item nine point eight to item fifteen point four.
All in favor? Fantastic, you got that. We are going to move Agenda Item nine point eight to fifteen point four. Great, that brings us to Agenda Item, uh, ten point one. And we will entertain motions to.
I move to enter into Executive Session for the purpose of discussing the following, uh, discussions regarding proposed pending or current litigation, collective negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen of the Civil Service Law, the medical financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation.
Moved by Aaron, second by Jacob. Question, debate, conversation. All in favor? Fantastic. Uh, the board will be headed next door that we're headed to for Executive Session. I cannot give an indication of how long we will be. Uh, I hope it will be efficient, maybe forty-five minutes. Patience, we are returning from Executive Session. Um, we will continue on with our agenda. Uh, and, um, prior to that, um, we'll ask if there are any modifications to the agendas, the remainder of the agenda.
Yeah, I move to add, um, an addendum supplemental report to item twelve point one of our agenda.
Moved by Adam, second by Jacob. Questions, conversation, discussion. All in favor of that modification? That is unanimous for the people who are present, who are missing one board member.
Okay.
Got it. Emily. Fantastic. That will bring us to the consent agenda and we will entertain motions.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented with the addendum.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, second by Adam. Questions, conversation, debate.
Just a point that I will vote in favor for the consent agenda, only that I will have to abstain from the minutes from June twenty-fourth since I was not president.
Any other discussion or conversation? We'll call the question, all in favor? Fantastic. Uh, we will continue on with school business. Uh, that includes the adoption of the two, tw, yeah, the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six board meeting schedule. And we will entertain, well, before we entertain motions, um, again, we'll have a quick conversation. Board members, I do have a conversation or a question that we may want to consider. Um, if folks can see the calendar that is presented, um, my recommendation in short would be for the month of November. Uh, we currently have a board meeting scheduled on Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, that is the week of Thanksgiving. The following day, that Wednesday is the beginning of Thanksgiving break. We have tried not to have meetings the night before a break. Uh, the way in which the schedule is listed currently, we have a voting meeting on Tuesday, November eighteenth. And then on Thursday, we have Facilities and Finance Committee meeting scheduled. I would like to propose a modification that we hold the Facilities and Finance Committee meetings on Tuesday, the eighteenth, and a special voting meeting on Thursday, the twentieth, and not have a meeting the week of Thanksgiving.
That sounds good, although I cannot see the calendar.
Yeah, I think it was locked for a number of folks. But hearing it does, does sound good. Um, and I've gone through the calendar and make sure that we avoided some other things we did. So for example, the month in June, uh, we have no meeting scheduled during commencement, moving up ceremonies, things of that nature. Um, and, uh, Tricia did a good job of making sure that we move meetings around when there are breaks that are taking place as well. That was the only one that I thought would be a, a good idea to move, to move from there. So with that being said, if folks, if we can entertain motions with that one change for the month of November, uh, we'll go from there.
Motion to adopt, I move to adopt the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six board meeting schedule as presented with the modification, uh, presented by Sean.
Moved by Aaron, second by Jacob. Questions, conversations. All in favor? Fantastic, we'll work on getting that meeting schedule up on the website for our community members. Uh, a resolution, the next one, Agenda Item fifteen point two.
I move to expend funds for board members Madeline Cardona and Jacob Schifrin to complete state-mandated new board member training courses.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, second by Adam. Question, conversation. Adam and Madeline, I hope you are made aware that you are required to complete, Jacob, my apologies, um, not Adam. Yeah, uh, and I would assume that many board members will tell you they find that training to be helpful. So I would recommend trying to complete it sooner rather than later if your schedules allow. People have done both. People have done both. Yeah.
Cool.
Alright, we'll call the question, all in favor? Fantastic, that passes. Uh, the next item is Agenda Item fifteen point three. Um, I think we can have a small conversation, though I would recommend that we put this back on the agenda for August ninth. Uh, most likely these, um, advisory councils wouldn't begin into the school year anyway, when we can get educators to be a part of them. Um, Madeline, if I heard correctly, there was a conversation, uh, from you, a recommendation to consider a special council on athletics and a special council on special education. Um, that'd be one idea that we should explore. Um, I'm recommending that we have one on sustainability or to, uh, focus on the Sustainability Action Plan that was presented to the board. That's one I'd like to discuss as well. Um, in the past, we've had Legislative Advocacy Committee. Um, again, uh, that's something that we can discuss as well. Are there any others that we should be thinking about and or doing some work between now and August to be ready for additional conversation?
You know, Sean, I think that, um, what would be useful is that we internally send some of the descriptors where you, the, the formation of these committees has specific wording and charges. So I think anyone who has an idea for committees should create a charge and we can work together to create the language for that. So when we come to our next meeting, we're ready to discuss these in full. Um, and you know, for new board members who are interested, right, we can direct you on how to do that, even talk to legal and share some of the past emails we'd shared with these discussions, so we can make this kind of expedite the process. Because it's, it's cumbersome to discuss in a public meeting.
Yep. Uh, if it's okay by the board, I'll create a, um, document, uh, for suggestions that will include some of the former language, so you can see both the charge and the timeline and how these are then voted by, by resolutions. So we can maybe streamline the process and answer some questions via email and then bring them back for August ninth, if that works for folks. Fantastic. Uh, and then we moved an agenda item to fifteen point four, uh, about, uh, cellphone. Um, usage of cellphone for select employees. Um, I think it'd be my recommendation that we do officially table this until August ninth.
August ninth?
Is, so then what date am I talking about when I keep saying August ninth? I'm gonna say the twelfth, I'm gonna say whatever that Tuesday is in August. Yep, so mid-October, so the twelfth.
I, I, I agree. Do we have to do a formal motion to table it?
Uh, if we, we should, but.
Okay.
Do you, do you want to do that motion?
I move to table item fifteen point four, um, discussion about cellphones until the August twelfth meeting.
All in favor? That is so tabled until the next meeting. Uh, I believe that is it, good folks. We will bring the meeting to a close. Thank you all. We'll see you all soon. Board members, we'll see you tomorrow.
We're meeting in, over there tomorrow, right?
We're meeting in.